Hope we're a little past that here. But you never know.
I better mute my phone, huh?
Probably.
Not ready for winter.
I think we just got our last hurrah the other day. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Sixty degree weather. That's what hurt. The course of the year, happy to.
Yeah, the older you get and the one where it gets the more like enticing. Just stay there.
We went down, we went to Mike and Son, you've been there and went to Fort Lauderdale for three days in Key West before. Couldn't afford to live in either area. But I sure liked the weather.
Absolutely. You didn't bring your glasses, you didn't bring your pen. Brian?
I didn't want to be here.
I don't think none of them. Yeah, I didn't know. Big Todd is coming.
Yes, we do. It's. Thanksgiving.
Maybe Carl and Todd. I know Mark is.
You have to pass it back and forth. Oh, you got it.
My glasses don't. So who? Oh, yeah. You went to the nurse?
Yeah, Larry's in there too, lost. All right. Skeeter sitting in the wheelchair.
Do you recognize? Did he recognize you?
Yeah. Took him a little bit, I think.
Cause I've heard from some people, I haven't been there. But I've heard from some people, he doesn't recognize him.
I think he had a hard time. Of course, you know with the mask, and then I have a hat, I took a hat off and showed him my bald head.
Larry, why? Larry can't stay at home no more.
And I don't think he could. Won't ever be back at home, babe. Depends what they do.
I don't think they can do much.
No, I think we either.
You're not gonna say you're chitter chatter the whole time, Ryan?
What difference?
Oh, yeah.
I wasn't saying a word.
What's the main thing that they're?
Yeah, prohibitive costs because they didn't come up with a good answer. I asked that.
What section is that?
What do you got? I didn't do it.
Here.
I need a key to the courthouse so we can go ahead and get answered.
Yeah, right now.
What's on this? She just wanna be.
Because I asked a question.
You're right, estimation.
They said, well, they submitted some cost, but they were just estimations. We need something. Contractor or whatever to say what's got cost. To see if the costs are prohibited. Yeah. They just submitted estimated costs, right? With their application, right? They just submit estimated costs.
Um, they have it.
I have seen.
Mrs. Got it.
Okay.
Well, if they sent an email.
Yeah.
Right. Remember eight forty-five Friday morning trip? And for most of you, Annex Building is having a Thanksgiving if you want to come. You know.
I thought you said Friday, the eighth third.
It was, it was, but.
Number hours.
Yeah.
You have the notice done.
Just come at eight thirty. Thirty minutes.
I was used to this computer having incident like I was pummeling around, you know, I had a little trouble. Getting riled.
It would've taken me longer to go to the other one.
Right.
But.
You got happy. Would be here all night. Oh.
I don't know if it's just like your last meeting before there was just so much chatter within the, I don't do that. That's not what the minutes.
It's a public.
No, it's not a public area. Anybody, any problems with that?
Oh, well, right. You can, you can decide who you want to hear. And I think everybody's got their street. You don't have, it's not a hearing, it's just, there's no requirement. Just a working session. But it has.
Tonight? We don't actually decide on the.
Well, you know. I mean, you can. Right, to formally change it, but of course you can, you can kind of make like an agreement about what. What y'all think you're gonna do, it just is gonna happen. You see what I'm saying?
Where's what's.
Bill?
Bill?
He's supposed to be here.
Yeah, he should be here.
Still got six minutes, so.
Here, a little late in the ice, put in that door over there.
He has a key.
I didn't want. I'd like take. Oh, I tell you, I lost.
You've left your.
Oh, which? You talk about getting paranoid. Yeah, it took me almost off.
I gotta get some data. Looking at doing our. Subscribe. Passos. Yes. Well, just the last. Don't wanna go into the dollars.
Hi.
So. Yeah. It makes it green, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
You know?
Hit that right on the head.
All right.
Oh, it's copy of the orders.
Bring dinner? No?
No, I.
Rich, you want copy of the order?
I'm about to give the card.
Okay. She wanted that one for me?
Yeah, we got.
Did you want a copy of yours? Sure.
Other.
Number eight, that's one that. Most trouble. I know we have a planning director and both, but do you want, do you think? Two step page. Do you think you wanna leave it up to just one person rather than planning commission itself?
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe I just.
I don't know.
No, no, I only, the planning, it says. The planning director makes the determination rather than the planning commission.
Wow.
I think it's probably better if the planning commission makes the decision, puts a.
Yeah.
Yeah, chitter chatter, that's what I'm talking about.
What's that?
Chitter chatter.
We're not started yet.
I'm just kidding.
I know you, you're not used to real substance discussion.
No, I don't do that. I try not to. If possible. Then that turns.
Plus, plus prohibitive costs, but you know, how do we know?
Yeah. Everything in this world can be improved.
I'll switch pages.
I mean, yes. This is all, all this stuff. Anyway. The minutia, you know?
Yeah.
See.
We'll see if they're trying to say that. Has to be unless the cost.
It's not really the reason. And maybe they just make sense.
Yeah. We shouldn't.
I'll go ahead and call media order.
Let's do the duties to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're here tonight to kind of go over the ordinance and talk about maybe having some changes to the ordinance. Or thoughts on it, what we can adjust. If anybody on these two boards has anything, let's start there.
All right, I guess I'm not afraid. For everybody's information, for your information, I'm Todd Jackson, Vice President of Planning Commission. And one of the reasons we had this meeting or request this meeting is basically to clarify the solar ordinance in general. There's a lot of gray areas, things like that. We want to make sure it's simplified, make sure it's a black and white document when the solar companies can go through processes submitting their. Plan of project for approvals is basically a checklist down the, down the board. So a couple of things that have been, have come up recently is under number eight, within the ordinance itself. The greatest practical stand, all electrical wires and utility connections for the project itself shall be installed underground. Except for transformers, inverters, switchyards, substations and controls. The planning director or building commissioner for Stark County will take into consideration for hooded costs and site limitations for making his or her determination. The gray area that I feel on this, or we feel as a board, is the prohibitive cost statement. It is not a defined statement, so one of the things I'd like to clarify today would be a. Either percent of the cost of the project or a total dollar amount that would classify as a prohibitive cost within the ordinance itself. There's a couple of things further on, I guess that's the first one I'd like to clarify, I guess. Or do you want to go through all of them that each individual has?
Yeah, or well, if you've got more, let's get through.
Okay. Um, the couple of other ones that I want to do is this not clearly defined within the ordinance itself. But as we all are concerned about heavy equipment running on the property, whether it be, you know, running lines underground or just heavy equipment in general. Ground disruption, there could be tile damage to a field. So we need to clarify within the ordinance itself that tile damage will be. I don't know, speaking with the mammoth group, they have plans within their plan themselves to repair any tile damage, but there is nothing within the ordinance that states that any damage that occurs to. Tiling within a field, existing tiling within a field needs to be repaired. So I'd like to see that put into the ordinance as well as a clarification. And then the last thing I have is, as of right now, we do not have a definition on acres for individual, each individual project itself. So somewhere in there, I know there's concerns, not only from the public, elsewhere. There is concerns about how big is the project's going to get, each individual project going to get. So whether we put a cap on the amount of acres each individual project is allowed to utilize within a given area that they're identifying, whether we put a percentage of the amount of acres of. Available farmland within Stark County, whether we put available acres, the cap on the available acres with each township that they're working in. However, we do it by likely have a clarification of the acreage within the ordinance itself too.
We're gonna start limiting how many acres of a particular crop we can also plant. We're gonna limit solar, why don't we limit everything else that goes on the ground here?
Because we have no control as a Stark County Board to control what an individual farmer does in terms of his crop planting. That is a USDA thing, which is a national government. But as a Stark County entity, we have control and we have a responsibility to protect our citizens within our boundary lines of Stark County. And with that, with that plan is protecting the environment. There's a lot of things that are repercussions of a solar thing. The more we grow the acres, the more we're taking business out from everybody else, whether it be. Ag companies, Stark County Co-op, CFS, COVID ag, whatever it may be, we're taking money out of their pockets in the day. It's going to affect the overall insurance for farmers in the area because, you know, most solar fire fields are gonna go on the worst farm that a farmer has. So that's only gonna leave really high production ground. There's no change or. I look at past what this ordinance says and past what everybody wants to do, I'm looking at the entire picture. I'm not looking at a very narrow broadscape. You gotta remember, these are suggestions, whether they get put in warrants or not, up everybody else.
Last one, I don't know about the legality of that, how we go about doing it, letting certain percentages. I'm not sure if that would be even accept legal. Like if it's allowable in this zoning district, we can't, I'm not sure. I'm not asking attorneys, I don't know if that would be, we can cap that.
That's like a new, just like a new area.
Yeah, yeah, there's. I mean, what?
I believe we can. Well, we can limit the number of acres.
Terst reaction to the suggestion of limiting the build out of solar.
The question is legality is.
Whether we have powers to limit something like.
Right. So did you want a response on that? I mean, yeah, just curious. I, you know, well, I think you, one thing you could do is. You know, I don't know if there's a real simple solution. I'm not familiar with one that's with an ordinance that says. There's a maximum of, you know, twenty percent of the farmland in the ag district. And I, you know, and I'm not saying that's not, you know, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not familiar with an ordinance that says that, I don't know what the authority for that would be. What you could probably do, I'm not saying it's a good idea, but what you could do would be to divide the agricultural district into more than one district. And then you could, you know, make it at least more difficult to put them in. For example, I think something you might have seen, you might see some places would be. A prime farmland district, so farmland of a certain level of productivity in blocks. And in some cases, I think even the owners of those properties voluntarily put their land into a prime farmland district, which, you know, that could limit. Another thing that you could do is you could create some, I've heard people suggest this, and once again, none of these things am I arguing for, but I'm saying I think you could. You know, for example, you could have a, an area around, like for example, lakes or. Or municipalities that would be zoned, you know, like it would have a different zoning classification. I think you'd probably have to do it by classifications. And Mr. Bedrock, do you have an opinion on that? I mean.
Well, I think so many things and areas come under general welfare. You can find that it's in the general welfare of the county that we limit it to two thousand acres for solar, and that's it. Now, I'm sure this, these questions haven't been litigated in this state yet, so we, it's hard to give you a definitive answer on it. Now, it may have been addressed in other places, but not here.
I don't know. Yeah, I would agree.
So many things come under general welfare. You know, if a board determines it's in the general welfare of the community, that we limit the number of acres, then so be it, and it has to be litigated.
That's all I had, John.
All right. Yeah, sorry, apologize. A little bit late, you guys might have talked about it briefly before I got here, but. Have we talked about the setbacks around pre-existing homes that's already in place? The verbiage needs, I need for my glasses, but it's, what is it? Two hundred feet from the foundation, fifty foot from the property line. I don't think that's enough myself. We talked about that when we were doing this ordinance and somehow it got changed. I think we need to protect the person that was already there first. You know, if somebody comes in after the fact and buys land next to a solar farm, then so be it. But somebody that's got a pre-existing home, that number needs to change because we need to set those back a little bit away from their residents.
Bill, do you have an idea of how many residents that will fall under that situation?
Well, we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of new property and I haven't had a chance to go out and look at all of them yet, but we do have some that's gonna be approaching, approaching a few people's back doors. And I don't think two hundred feet from residents or fifty feet from a property line's enough. I would, I would like to see at least six hundred feet from the property line itself. At least, at least give them a little bit, and then, you know, by the time we got the vegetation buffer that has to go around that with the trees and stuff. Gives them a little bit more privacy, a little bit more to enjoy their home. I mean, that's some of the stuff that I've had asked me. Did we talk about already about the section in there? With Bose and like the electrical issue we're talking about right now that we discussed.
I brought that up.
Yeah, I mean, you know, let's put a lot of pressure on Bose, you know, when, when the company suggesting that we overturn something. Or along that line, I think it should have to come in front of the board itself. I don't think Bose should have that weight on his shoulders that, I don't think it's fair to.
We didn't discuss it with everyone, we discussed it down here that we thought, I thought it should be planning commission as opposed to just Bose.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't think we should put him in that position. I don't think that it's right, it should come in front of the board. And, you know, he's gonna have a lot of inspections and stuff to do why this is going on. And him going out and going over changes and situations and all that pressure being put on him, I don't think that's right. So I'd like to see that changed, you know, change orders or anything. I'd like to see that be worded as, as to come in front of the Stark County Planning Commission.
I agree with you on it.
Yeah. Subcommittee. Evaluating things, yeah, there's a. The tech committee evaluates everything, but right now, that's what it stays, so. For example, they don't want to bury the electrical lines, they go to Bose and say, hey, you know, we don't want to do this cost prohibitor or whatever. I don't think that should be put on.
Right, well, when. And the way this is written right now, a change order or something like that wouldn't go through the tech committee of.
No, they go through Bose.
Okay.
Number eight says planning director, specifically says planning director. H.
Yeah, probably need, that might be a completely experience, a little maybe rearranged so that more goes through that tech committee rather than. Just on the.
Committee doesn't make a decision, they would just refer to the commission, the planning commission, and then the commission decides.
Yeah. And that's still, just take the, take it from one person to the whole force.
Yeah.
So how do, how do you propose to talk with, like prohibitive, prohibitive cost of the, you know, compared. Would we say it would cost as much if we buried it if we?
Yeah, I mean, there definitely needs, there definitely needs to be some numbers in there, but another concern of mine is having them wires above the ground. Is there's gonna be animals inside of those things eating the cover off the wires. Somebody in there to rub up against them, whatever, I mean, there's gotta be a public safety consideration in there too before cost prohibited.
But. It's in their fence and that's, you know, animals too and all sorts of stuff. Irrigation wires.
But there's still people go inside that fence all the time and we gotta look out for their well-being too.
I mean, that's, was that on the company though? You know, company.
You can find a cure for stupid, I'd love.
That's what I'm saying. You know, and our ordinance says the wires should be buried anyway, but, you know, then we get a proper cost prohibited clause with no safety stuff involved in there. And safety should become before cost prohibited.
Do the, in the section. Before that, it's, it says that they have to follow all those codes, right? And those would include safety center, correct?
Yeah. So. I disagree with, with that.
Before. Through, this is the state bill that we opposed to do. In the spring. I opposed it because the state doesn't need to be telling us how to run things. That, and this, this isn't limited to just solar, it also covers wind power. We've already established how we want wind power to go here. And we don't want that erased, but there, as far as solar goes, there is a lot of good things in here that. Probably would be useful as far as fleshing out what's in our ordinance. I mean, this does. Address. Underground and above-ground cables. All cables up to thirty-four and a half kilovolts that are located between inverter locations and project substations shall be located and maintained underground. That does at least forty-eight inches below grade, so it's not to interfere with drainage tile or insurpairs. There is something in here about. The. The expense part you mentioned with the above-ground wires, we might take a look at. Also, there's things here as far as the setbacks that were mentioned earlier. I mean, I think these are. In some cases greater, in some cases less, you know. Forty feet from. I mean, I think Caesar in some cases greater, in some cases less, you know, forty feet from. The nearest edge of right away, we're kind of highway. Re line of nonparticipating party of fifty feet. Hundred and fifty feet uh from the nearest point of an outer wall of drill dwelling located on a non participating property. Two hundred and fifty feet measured as a straight line from the nearest outer edge to. Foundation of a dwelling on a non creating property. I think this might be a good start.
I think one of the you know setback, that's kind of, I think one of the biggest concerns I've heard from a lot of people is a setback. Minimum on that, that's something we really need to look at. Yeah, that's definitely less.
What would be your recommendation on that?
I mean, two hundred feet, that's nothing, that's nothing at all.
I don't know, I you had said what, six hundred? I bought six hundred feet from the property line, not the foundation. Really, I feel like it should be from the property. We measure everything from the foundation.
Well, what I've heard is probably the main concern is that the wiring is underground. And the issue that deals with the wiring underground is prohibitive cost. So I think we need to address what is makes prohibitive cost. And and I think like, I know Todd said earlier, a percentage of the total cost or whatever, but we need to. At least come up with something.
Anyway, so came through Jasper County the other day, couple of weeks ago. Just cross Star County line, a lot of infrastructure that is going in there. Uh they've started their solar projects there and as we've been discussing here, I thought, you know. Uh because it it's hard, it's hard to cover, there are so many variables. It's hard to cover everything, so I thought, why can't or why don't we, if we haven't? Have we talked to other counties such as Jasper County? Um about their ordinance and what they're doing and so in the meantime, a couple of days ago, I was talking to Lisa Dan. And she said that they had hired Jasper County um uh hired Baker Tilly to help with the ordinance.
To help with the ordinance and the economic development agreement. And then and then as far as technical things, you know, there could be a third party engineering group that could um provide expertise as well. Where there are great areas where we may not know the answers.
So anyways, they spent nearly a hundred thousand dollars to have Baker Tilly come in. My my question is, or it is, you were going to call someone, I believe, from Jasper County?
Right, and um and and actually. So we absolutely would pay. A lot of these sorts of things and um you know, I think that any of our solar developers that would come in.
Okay, the only reason I brought her, I'm sorry, I know we're not have public comment, but the only reason I brought her in is because we talked about it, what Jasper County is doing. And and I I guess, I I feel personally that they're 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 going. And they're putting their infrastructure in, they know what they're doing. They know what they want to do and all I'm asking is from the board is, do we need to take a look? So maybe the we're not going to agree on everything, there are certain things that our county is going to want. But I'm just, I I'm I'm trying to take some of the uh shooting in the dark and wow, do we, don't we? And it's only our opinion, it's two hundred feet, you know, enough or you know, I I I'm just. We're I'm I guess I'm just saying, trying to narrow it down to. Uh with with people that are already started the project, they have had professional help. In in setting up their ordinance and that's, I I think I would like to look if we can, if they give it to us or share it with us. Um something like that. Is okay, all right, we changed some stuff, okay, but you changed some, okay, very good. But they were putting their stuff in and so I thought we should, you know.
And now that being said, I talked to next air today, because they want to meet with me on the third. Um I did talk to him about burying wires and stuff, they said all their wires are buried. So I don't know if maybe we need to take a look at that or what, but like what he told me over the phone, all the wires are buried.
But so we 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 would reimburse gladly if you hire an expert because these matters are are technical and they're complicated. Even for me, uh you know, you wanted to hire an engineer or something like that, we would gladly reimburse that to Todd's idea.
If I can interject, we we're already started on that process, you know, we we've uh actually the firm. As far as in Thornburg and you know, Baker Tilly is working for Barnes and Thorber, we've already been in contact with them for a while. And we're just firming up the details of it, so that you you know, and and you know, we did lots of research to before all this is done. So we really haven't been, you know, guessing at it, you know, to be honest with you, so. But yes, we are, we're going to bring them in to have, and you know, not just for the purpose of expertise. But also because there's some benefit to some consistency, not everything is going to be consistent. But some consistency in the various jurisdictions, so when the developers are working, they don't have to go wait in my Pulaski County now, in my and Star County now. You know, if we have a reason to have different rules, that's good, but we don't necessarily want just a patchwork. It doesn't have any rational basis, if that makes sense, I I with a developer, I mean, you know, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, consistency.
Is helpful for everybody. Right, and I think that's one of the things that Mark, you know, here mentioned, you know, you you take, starting out with the state's rules. It doesn't mean that you want to have them imposed on you, but but drawing upon those because they do have greater level of expertise. And also the benefit of it is, it's kind of hard for the state to tell you your your rules are crazy if they have the same rules. So you know, that's something that I certainly have argued for many times here, is that if we can follow state standards, not that you have to. You can alter them for a reason, but you want to talk about maybe why you did it and all that, that's all.
Because every time they bring up something like this in the state legislature, I'm going to oppose it just because. They're not us, we can, we can run our county just fine without Indianapolis telling us how to do it. But if they but but they got some good ideas, I'm going to steal them if I think they're good.
If they publish proposed standards that you could refer to as a helpful guidance, that that'd be completely different than telling you, you have to follow those, right?
Yeah, I got I had one of the probably the most notable one complaint that came to me. Was the notification process, which I know is a very technical and hard job. How it is because nobody listens to the radio and radio anymore, nobody, nobody reads the legal paper. Um one of the concerning things was is people just didn't find out about it. Is there anything we could do to tweak the notification product process where the land, you know, somebody has to send out letters? Whether it's a solar company that's applying for the permit, has to notify the surrounding neighbors. What is there anything that could be done to get more public information out?
Well, a a prior version of this ordinance included that this would be a conditional use. And that was rejected, if it had been done as a conditional use, notices would have gone to all adjacent landlords. And there had been an opportunity for these issues about setbacks to be discussed in that context, that there was a decision made to cut that out of the ordinance. That that, you know, but we know what, you can review, you can go back and review anything the ordinance and change it. Uh that's that's, I mean, there are things, I'm certain, there are a few things that humans do that can't be improved. So possibly this could be improved.
Well, I, yeah, I I would hope so because, I mean, one of the things that really hurt bad was is everybody thought. We were trying to push this by and not tell anybody and that's not true. We did what legally has to be done, we did our legal notification in the leader. We sent it to WKVI and people just don't use that stuff anymore for news. And it's been huge far as complaints that I've gotten, so I would like us to work on something with a better notification project process. Would there be a possibility there to do something with that?
With making it a condition, go back to making it a conditional use. I mean, I think now, once again, I want to really get, as you discussed, the getting the recommendations from people who specialize in this more, of course. But to me, the conventional way to do this would be to make it a conditional use. Now, and and to sort of everybody knows what a conditional use means, kind of boiled boiled down is. It it it's presumptive that that use is appropriate in that district. So it's hard to turn somebody down on a conditioning use, but there is a process for notification of adjacent landlords. There is a reasonable process for attaching conditions to the permit. You can't just, you know, deny the permit because you don't like the person or something, you have to have, you know, a profit. It's presumptively acceptable in that district, but there is the kind of process that involves notice there. So now, of course, it does add some burden on everybody to go through all that, because you have a lot of a lot of parties to be notified.
But you can establish certain conditions that the person who was looking for the condition use doesn't want to meet those conditions. So you know, it's a a situation where a conditional use maybe more than what the. Uh property owner or the company wants to deal with. But I was also, you you indicated that, I guess the commissioners have uh contacted Barnes and Thorberg or whatever. But I think they should be made available for the planning commission because initially, the planning commission or planning director. Uh is the one that's involved in in the initial uh. Discussions or whatever concerning this ordinance and and the placement of the solar system, so we should have access. We don't have the funds for it, so you're going to have to pay for it, but right, right, Bill?
Well, we'll have to talk about that, if that goes forward, because you know, the contract actually is very specific that the only client is is the commissioners. But I I think, I don't think that means that the commissioners can't say, you should talk to, you see what I'm saying?
I would think, given that Brian's on the plan commission.
First, we're hearing about it.
Well, the second we've brought it up to think about it. I was kind of wondering.
I would say as far as notifications, when we put up our hog buildings, all of our neighbors had to be notified. And so I think there should be a notification for each, because as as Bill had said. We don't know what a lot of what's going on in the county if we're not listening to the radio and and reading the papers. So if there's some way that we can um each adjoining neighbor could be notified, I think that's probably the best thing to do. In a written letter or whatever, so.
A question for Buzz, you indicated you talked to Jasper County officials today and everything's on the ground. So I assume they haven't run into a situation of prohibitive cost. Okay, but but everything's on the ground. So it's not a prohibitive cost situation there and I assume that their topography is the same as ours.
Said more about below ground stuff.
Put it out between the commissioners and the planning commission, I did meet with Dan out at the highway department this week after the commissioners meeting. And we talked about the route over there at the lake. And when they showed us the route in the commissioners meeting, they had, they went through like new subdivision and stuff like that off of two ten nine to six bit. And it's really simple, we're coming in off of eight hundred south out in that area. Uh in the subdivision and stuff like that, and especially this is in the summertime, there's a lot of golf cart tra- traffic right there in that area, bicycle. And stuff like that, so uh I did discuss that with him too, so we wouldn't have all this right in the middle of the subdivision right there at the lake.
I can't remember, I know it was two only two days ago, but was I just taking under advisement or?
Uh what, getting back to parts, they have a they have a road use agreement, you know, he just wasn't able to schedule us yet.
Right.
That's what I I wanted to make sure we looked at the specialized ones. Yeah, so that is that that's in process, yeah.
Was there anything else we discussed the other day when we were talking about these changes?
Can you sit and everything that we talked about? Do you like the notifications for surrounding people? Set that, it built us on that, once these guys get per permits, we don't have permits on the property. The next door property go over major, you know, walk all of their property, get majorism and stuff. So I think we need to go from a property line.
That would be the next issue, if the property line wasn't visible, how would you, I mean?
You'd have to have, you'd have to have, you'd have to have a licensed surveyor come out, set the boundaries, I mean, that would be the best thing to do.
They're going to need that anyways for their fence and everything.
Big questions I've got left, and I don't know, we were planning on addressing to post to these topics tonight, but. Better um battery or energy storage. Is a concern of mine, as I've seen when when a when a electrical fire turns into a battery fire.
You know, what's? I believe that there's no storage, I believe this.
I don't know so much about the next.
Right, yeah, there there will be other projects and even maybe in in the three projects that that are going to come up this year. You know, this is the one for Mammoth and the two others to follow, you know, that might be a thing. These leases are for a long time and and technology will change at least three or four times over. In the in the in that span of time. I don't, yeah, I don't know if the if this particular ordinance is a place for that or if there's. If there's some other thing, because I know it's been brought up and. Think the default assumption was that for. Uh, grid scale energy storage, you'd need some sort of industrial zoning.
That would be my recommendation, you know, I, I, I think that becomes more of an industrial use, yeah, yeah.
But what's actually in place, what's, I mean.
That we probably ought to look at clarifying that. I mean, I, I think that is a very relevant issue.
I can, if the rumor mill is to be believed, that is a strong possibility in, in the Dunn's Bridge. The only other thing I had was just the timeline for when. That, because it's not quite clear whether that's done before or after or in the same breadth as the. Permits are issued.
So I have a question. So my question is, is that bond, you know, so the cleanup process when they leave and stuff is supposed to be, who holds that bond?
Well, I don't know, the industrial areas are, that's, that's different.
I know that's interesting, but like you said, we opposed, you know, this is.
Artists, I've asked that question a couple of times in the past and I just don't seem to get anywhere with it. You know, who holds the, who holds the bond for the cleanup process when it's over? Does it, does the bond come to the county? Does it stay with the company? What do we do to protect ourselves when this project's over from cleanup? Or.
I believe it's held by. The really valid point is, I hope it doesn't happen with you guys, but the strong possibility. That a company folds or bought out or otherwise doesn't exist as it is today. How is that? Right, how is that transferred and all that fun stuff? Yeah, that is a question that probably needs to be addressed somehow.
Well, you know, obviously, they, they take the property substantially, some permits, but, uh, and, and we would anticipate that there would be changes in plans of these organizations. I don't think that's, that would almost be expected rather than something that would be unusual. Uh, but, but I, I believe, you know, the thing is, I, I'm, I have to say, I can't cite the, I can't cite the authorities or whatnot, but I, I believe that the bonds are held by a third party organization. But. But I can't cite that.
Yes, there's a lot of text and you gotta find two words in it. Right now.
And it may not even be included, it may be included in the actual.
Yeah. It's somewhere in twelve, but, yeah. Yeah. Some sort of insurance in a, in a form except, well, yeah, that probably needs to be a little more clearly defined. What we name as an acceptable form of assurance. Someone taking notes.
Got to record. Just grab the recorder. Says reevaluation after five, ten, whatever years, and then proof of acceptable financial assurance will be required prior to the start of commercial operation. Well, it seems to me it's already going to be in operation.
Well, that's where your permits come in, you gotta, you know, I don't know how you have permits without enforcing them. Gonna require on.
And we're not requiring permits every five years, are we? New permits, new issue?
Yeah, that's just continued to cooperate, right?
Yeah. But I mean, the language here says that it's to be reevaluated five, ten, fifteen years before the commercial operation begins. And it's already started. It's been in operation for quite some time.
It's a commercial operation, I think the generation of elections. That's, that's when they, that's when they, you know, under the MLB, that's when we requirement for them to start paying via, you know. Per megawatt. Essentially tax.
That's not consistent because it's just, it has to be reevaluated because the cost may change. After five years or 10 years, and then it says that. Of acceptable financial assurance will be required prior to the start of the commercial operation.
It'd be better if it was in the order, but I, I take the proof of acceptable as the beginning. And the five years, if you start saying any more sense before, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
We could do that. I mean, there's probably some edits. Now that we see real, you know, real things happening, right? That's why we're here.
And beyond when, beyond that, how do we? Get into writing or, or at least. Keep it in the forefront by getting concessions that may be made in the process. Like, for example, I don't, I don't even know what even came of it. I know we had a meeting at the best lake properties owners association building back when you got your new truck. And there was talk about diverting a well or, or something to help maintain the lake levels. And does that get baked into it in the process here to make sure that that actually?
That happened, as we told them in that meeting as far as county standpoint, that the county would not. Would not be involved in any.
Okay.
Personal or any upgrades to a well or any of that, the county didn't want anything to do with any outside bargers.
Okay.
That happened.
So we, so that's, so that's viewed as an out, an outside agreement between them and property owners?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what we thought back then. I mean, that's what we told the one in charge.
Yeah, okay. That's even better. If the more it's kept private, in my eyes, the better.
Yeah, because the wells belong to us. I mean, it's just one of those deals, only that equipment's county equipment and. We don't want to be responsible for it, or do we want to be a part of a barter?
Good. Do you have anything else?
I, I don't have anything else. There hasn't been anything else for me to react to yet.
Would dream my phone for a couple of weeks.
Straight to the lake.
I guess we could take a couple of comments.
You could, one of the things, just before, before adjourning, I hope maybe there's some kind of, you know, some kind of idea about what the, you know, what the action items are. Uh, you know, I mean, and I don't know that you have to agree on all the action items, because one of the things I would suggest, like one of the things, you know, one of the big questions is how far is that setback? Maybe there ought to be some impact determination about how many acres of land you, you, you're actually, you know, dealing with there. Uh, that, that seemed like a relevant thing you ought to know the answer to, if you see what I'm saying. If you're, you know, how many acres are you taking out of the, you know. Uh, project, right? Or out of act production too. I mean, what, what are the, what are the various impacts, you know, so. Before, you know, picking a number, this is kind of a, it's kind of a balancing act, isn't it? I mean, ultimately that, that, it's a balancing thing, right?
You increase the setback too much, go have more acres to get their, their numbers.
Right, yeah, it might actually take more land out, right? And by the same token, you know, what is, what is needed? So I don't know. I mean, I, I, I would, I would want to know numbers on that before making that call. It's a hard call in any event, right?
And Purdue has a, I don't think it's been released, a survey of solar ordinances around the state. And that's, I can, I can get some numbers on, on some of that stuff, what other counties have done.
That's really helpful for drafting too, yeah.
So do we have a timeline of finalizing this? And can I ask a question of the Mammoth real quick? When do you guys plan on submitting your plans to our county for approvals?
I think that was, um, so Todd, uh, first package, uh, will be issued on Monday. Uh, that includes almost seventy-five, eighty percent of the civil design, the erosion control plans, uh, the general layout and things of that sort. It will be submitted by Monday.
So with that being said, you know, we kind of have to hump on this. And get everything figured out, whether it's through our design group or the county's design group, I guess, and how we move forward with this. Because we're going to have to have this to be able to go through and approve their plans going forward.
Right.
And they're wanting to start early in the spring, so it's one of these things we can't delay too much.
I mean, you know, there's some other things that go along with that too. It's got to have drainage board for ditches and piles and.
Yeah, it's gonna be a multi.
Yeah.
Lots of boards involved.
Yeah, there's multiple boards involved in even getting to, through the process.
Yeah, I mean, starting point for our board personally is this, and for the county is this, they got to follow these guidelines and rules. To be able to move on to the next step, next step, and next step.
I think basically most of that would be just that amendments, right?
Most, that seems to be the obvious thing, you know, and they don't seem to be that many, a few amendments. Now, obviously, they've already started their process, so you know.
I think we're too far along with this first one, can we change things before they start submitting? But we do, we do have an opportunity to get things refined, you know, we've learned with them, we'll refine them. And we'll see how our refinement, refinements work with the next project. That's the, the nice thing is. Projects in the works, so we can.
I just don't think, I don't think we could do that with one, you know, exempt one and then.
It's not, it's not an exemption, it's just that we didn't, you know.
It is really, it's just like. Grandfather and.
It's grandfather.
I mean, we gotta slow down whatever we're doing here, you know what I mean? So, because if this is what we're going by, and this is what we're going by, even with these other ones, they're, they're coming into the office. If it's not, then I gotta have these changed before these guys come in, try and explain this is what was changed. Far as going back to that setback, what you was talking about a while ago. I, maybe I don't understand what you're saying, but I think it's got to be a number. I don't think it should go by acre. It will be kind of like your ditch is running through, you've got seventy-five feet. Well, if you only got this many acres, well, we'll move it down to twenty-five feet. They're just, that don't make sense to me. It needs to be one number.
And I think you need to make it from the property line as well, not from the foundation.
No matter how many acres they got.
One point of clarification is that we initially submitted preliminary plans back in May. So to the technical review, ready, just wanted to, so now we're coming, just walk that timeline.
I guess we could take a couple of comments, right?
Except to you.
We'll take a couple, we'll limit it to like a minute. Yeah, we'll do that, state your name and then the, what county you live in and all that, so we know. Just in case anybody's out of. Go ahead.
Yeah, Larry Whitaker, I live in Stark County. I just, when you're talking about setbacks on those houses, think about what if a person's house is six hundred feet away from the property line? And you're going to make it another six hundred feet? I think that's the reason that they went from the foundation with, with the number. You might change that number that you've got, but I would submit it. It would be, I think, more fair for everybody if it was the number from the foundation.
You can also look at that only being fifteen feet off the property line.
Yeah.
And going two hundred feet, you know what I mean?
The majority of them are closer to the property lines. There's very few that's a long ways away.
Right.
Also can't foresee what's going to happen in the future. If they're six hundred feet from the property line, you could build a couple of houses within that six hundred feet. Because you'll, we need certain amount of fronters.
Like what Bill said, while those people coming in in the future, they know what they're buying into. The ones right now, they're just kind of. They're getting blindsided, I guess you'd say.
Go ahead. Nick Cohen, president of Mammoth Project throughout LLC. Firstly, on setbacks, uh, you'll find developers are generally easy to work with. And, uh, if, if there's somebody that's in an objectionable position, a landowner, uh, you know, we don't need to need our arms twisted. We'll work with those people. Uh, generally, if you did something like six hundred feet, what it would do is it would take economic opportunity away from the, the people who were assigned on. By making a larger buffer of their property useless. And then it would create a situation where more acres are needed to satisfy the, the, uh, number of megawatts needed for the project. But in any case, like I, I think like a case by case basis, I know even speaking for us, we don't even look at this and we just talk to people. And if somebody calls us and they, they have an issue, we, we work with them. Maybe we don't put the panels at all near them. Or, or we agree to a landscaping, whatever it is, you know, it's a good faith effort. And, um, and I, I think all the developers would be honest that way. Um, one other thing, just kind of a bigger picture, is that when it comes to solar, the, the line is tapped out. Okay, I, I, at the moment, I can't see another project beyond ours and the next terror project. The line is completely tapped out and, and a lot of developers have land positions. But many of them recently have withdrawn from, from the queue because it's dead on arrival. So I, I don't see a situation where there's going to be a lot of, a lot more solar coming. And also there's competition from other counties that have other lines to interconnect to. Uh, there's only so much solar that the world needs and we're there. Um, it's a flash in the pan, one time opportunity. I think in two years, these projects will be built and you, you, you won't be hearing much about solar. Um, and then the last thing is, ju- just getting back to the conversation earlier that Todd mentioned. And, and I, I think Marty, you mentioned it too about hiring the experts. In most of the places where, where we are developing projects, they do hire the experts like what you're doing and, um. And, and they bring in, I don't know if, if one of the other, there's Baker Tilly and then there's the other firm. I don't know if they're engineering or not. But, but yeah, so often they, they bring in like an engineer. There's a lot of the issues like the DC tabling, other things that, that are civil design related. They have like a professional engineering firm that comes in and does it, and then the developer usually offers to pay for it. And, you know, I, I think any reputable developer would just reimburse you for whatever those costs are to have the professionals there. Kind of, you know, they're, they're blocking and tackling for you. So that you don't have the burden on your shoulder of making these technical decisions. You have an expert you can rely on who's working for you. So I, I just strongly recommend that. I, I thought it was a good idea. And it's an extension of what you're already doing on, on, on sort of the, the economic and, and legal side.
Many counties already do it for drainage ports. They send it off to an engineering firm and, and the developer.
And, and you know, what we're doing with is, you know, Barnes and Thorberg is the, is the law firm, and then they have engineers and, you know, analysts. And, and, you know, it's sort of, you know, they, they kind of are the, are one stop shop for that. Also frankly, another thing that's important for us is, is having a presence in the legislature. Uh, and, and they also provide us with lobbying if we need, and that, that is actually important, I think, for Stark County's position on these. To make sure that it, you know, it's, it's beneficial financially to the community.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we appreciate that. You know, there's a lot of benefits that this project brings and, you know, it, it, it's a huge investment. Hundreds of millions of dollars and there's a revenue stream here that, you know, in our tax deal that we have with you. Which is, you know, easily two and a half to three million a year. That just comes in, hopefully you equitably distribute it to the, the fire halls and the community and all that kind of stuff. But, uh, you know, we, we're looking forward to being a, a good neighbor in every possible way. And, you know, even if it's not written here and, and, you know, we're working with you. So, so what you, whatever you guys need, you know, we want to compromise. So so what you, whatever you guys need, you know, we want to compromise and make it easy. We just want to keep our schedule also. So, uh, but you have our pleasure that you have us as a partner.
Yes, sir.
Michael Shanspyer, resident of Bass Lake. So, you know, this is my first meeting, and I know it's kind of coming out of this very important time with solar. And like the effect of it, but I think we all have heard a lot of misinformation about what's actually, you know, and everyone's concerned about it. No one wants to jump and go through the process of explaining to people, hey, we have an ordinance. Like today, I I knew we had an ordinance, but it's defined here that there will be trees put up, there'll be visible barriers. And most people like, or especially in Bass Lake and as the property owners are just concerned, oh, it's going to be extremely visible from my boats or from my golf cart. And I think if the, you know, commissioners and, you know, other elected members in Stark County kind of tell like residents, hey, this is actually what's happening. Because otherwise, you know, your bills would have calls from people complaining, they don't even know where they're sourcing their information. We have it right here. We can get it from, you know, the developers and why why don't we just do that, just to kind of prevent all this chaos? That's kind of my big concern. And on top of it, the whole pump deal, I don't think it should be arbitrary. I mean, the lake is controlled by the DNR, right? So it's a state thing, so you can't just say, oh, it's a private deal. No, there's an easement that has to happen on wherever this new pump's going to be. And then the DNR has a say in it, so why does, why do you guys want to essentially not take any controlling ownership of this potential pump? Right? Like, I'm I'm just very concerned about the county not wanting to necessarily be involved. Because, I mean, Bass Lake's a great tax base for the county. It's about what, half? But it's it's a substantial amount. Why not improve it? That's that's kind of the only comment, so I really ask, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So you mentioned these other two projects, is this Dunn's Bridge part, one of those, or is that a third?
Dunn's Bridge is the second project, and then there's a third one between Knox and Hamlet.
Okay, and are there any other preliminary plans like these other folks have already?
She's shaking her head, said, no, I'm going to say that they have not.
It seems like a lot of the changes that you're talking about in this ordinance is kind of for future projects. As you mentioned earlier about moving the goalposts, I'm assuming the one big decision you all have to make is, is Lionsberry or not. But I mean, the other changes would be, at least it might be, moving goalposts, but this is part of the ordinance already, and you've already got that. We're all followers, and you're all to be able to make that decision.
I would agree with everything.
Oh, that's.
Good evening, Jeff from Hoosier Solar, I definitely want to support his comments on that. A a good developer is always a partner of the community, that's something that I work with, because whatever we do here will follow us. Anytime you get word of somebody being uncooperative or difficult, it'll make our next block, next project difficult. So good stewards of the community is something that I think everybody embraces and certainly we all do. But I wanted to address specifically the concerns about the wire and cable. I think the questions that you're asking are the right questions. And the concerns that you brought up for investigation, I think, are certainly the right concerns to to bring up as well. In in North America, in the United States, there's over five thousand utility scale solar installations and over a hundred and thirty gigawatts installed already. All of it, every single project has an above ground DC plant. And so the the person you spoke with at Next Terra, I think oversimplified the response to you. The solar panels themselves actually have wire connected to them. And then from there, you have to run wire to either a disconnect or a combiner. And almost always that is above ground. And everything after the disconnects and everything after the combiners is actually underground. And so I I think the suggestion to limit it for a percent of value of impact is an insightful suggestion, but definitely not the right one. And so what I would do and encourage you to do is is approach your ordinance to limit above ground cable to the disconnects of combiners and everything after that must be underground. Cause that's how solar is constructed. And it complies with code, you know, there's a hundred and thirty gigawatts built, it's very safe. These sites will be monitored more than likely twenty-four hours a day during construction. And post-construction will have some type of camera set up too. So I would be more than happy to provide some additional guidance on that. But percent of value, it's just gonna complicate your lives and give you a lot of headaches. It'd be a lot easier for yourselves and the developers. If you just say wire and cable after a disconnected combiner must be underground and anything before that above ground. Cause that's.
I I would add that we we actually will have physical security to protect people.
Yeah. Charlie, can you ask Jeff to break through?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm actually the Vice President of EPC at Hoosier Solar, we are in Indiana, they're in Indiana based company, I myself actually with Downey, Danville, Indiana. We're working on developing projects as well. And we're developing a four or six projects in Indiana. This area, I'm somebody rush. And so I'm up here on a weekly basis meeting with a lot of wonderful. As I said, I'd be more than happy and happy to use anybody else's board to explain further. But I I would encourage you to consider making cable underground after a disconnect or after a combiner. Because everything prior to that is low voltage, it's it's PV weighted rated wire. And you you cannot one hundred percent eliminate above ground wire, it's it's physically impossible. But you can limit it after the DC runs and the AC. And so.
Which is mainly outside, which is outside us, yeah. Let's see what's in here, located between inverted locations and substations.
Yeah, so that cable, it's very rare for that cable to be above ground.
Right.
I would tell you, it's probably, I mean, I've been doing this for almost fifteen years, next year will be fifteen years. Only time I see high voltage or medium voltage cable above ground is because the soil conditions are rocky or this caliche or there's artifacts or some other natural wonder that needs to be avoided, and so they go above ground. It's very, very rare to have AC cable.
And these are all, in most cases, stranded aluminum mini like conductors, right?
The DC, I'm assuming you guys are using a DC run, it's nineteen strand conductor, typically like two hundred and fifty KCM, but three hundred and fifty KCM is the max size. It'll go to a disconnect box, go underground and then home run into an inverter, and then everything after the inverter is always, nearly always. I'm just suggesting if you do it as a percent of cost, it's it's gonna be a big burden on you and and make it very, so do it after the disconnects or maybe you should have problems complying with that.
One more. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Margaret Wolf and are landowners, one hundred and forty-four acres and it's dark coming. But I'm here because I'm a Spanish teacher and I'm a Spanish teacher in northwest Monah. And I really want to go and work in North Johnson, but they have a position there. But you know why I didn't apply, because I went from Morgan Davis to Northwest. Morgan Davis, they offered me ten thousand dollars more in Northwest. Both the schools are one A. Then I'm thinking, okay, North Johnson, North Johnson, I know if I apply in North Johnson, they they are gonna pay me like five thousand dollars. And I know it's not about the money, but you guys know that teachers, we don't make a lot. So my goal, my hope is that with the solars, that we're, the Stark County is gonna have more money and the schools are gonna have more money. And then the schools can afford more teachers and, to be honest, I'm thinking I'll apply next year regardless of how much they pay. But but really, I I really hope that, and I know you guys mean the best, you know, that you care for all the
These.
But I really hope that we don't make it so hard that the solar companies don't want to be in our country. Because the schools really need the money. Morgan Davis, we didn't have. Patriot, we didn't have. Clinic said, we didn't have any. So when I went to Northwest, they don't even care about what they give us, markers they give us. Northwest is a one A, North Johnson is two A, why?
We have a lot of stakeholders in this room. Is that the last one?
My name's Dennis Pope, just one comment, I just thought that the the six hundred feet and with respect to Mr. Grace, I think it is way too much. There's going to be a fence and whether the fence is far away or near, it's going to be a fence. It's like if if we had neighbors that were close proximity, somebody puts up a fence. What's beyond that fence is is unseen pretty much. So I just think that the six hundred feet is is not fair. Okay?
Rich, I guess. I spoke to you before and just wanted to. That we need to limit the amount of solar farms in the in the county. The amount of acreage, I just think it's a smart thing to do. And also the size, just how big these things are going to be. I just, I I don't think a lot of people want to really look at these things. And I I think that's what we need to do. The President of the Rall said, oh, there's only so much limitation. But anybody can put up a line, that's not a big deal.
They can't, they can't, only the the utility can do that and. Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's seriously.
We're gonna have future meetings to address.
We have to hammer out. So I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know, I I don't know anything about wires or electricity, you know. Marty would want to.
So this ordinance was put in place about a year and a half ago. And our personal developers came in and they took this ordinance and they based their plans and their project on this ordinance. They've presented their information based on this ordinance. And so my opinion is this is the ordinance for the solar project.
So it did go to Johnson, but according to my math, this ordinance was put in place two and a half years ago.
Nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, you said a year and a half.
July of nineteen.
And we're in twenty-one.
Yeah.
So. But you gotta understand, as as things come to light and things develop, you know, we actually take a bigger look at these things. You know, there's just gray areas that we need to clarify. Last thing we want to do is have these gentlemen, whether this gentleman project or the other people coming in, submitting a project or submitting their plans. And then us going through it and say, well, this doesn't fall within the ordinance or it's in a gray area with the ordinance. My whole deal with this is just make it black and white, it's a checklist, it's simple. We just go down through the thing and check it off, make sure it's done, they follow the rules based on what the county wants. And then it moves on to build the surveyors area, it moves on to the drainage work commission and things like that. Otherwise, if it doesn't fall within this ordinance, we have to go back to them, they have to change some things and it's, you know, we've been arguing, not arguing, but we've been kind of going over this wire thing for about two months, three months now. And it's just one of those things, let's clarify the whole process, make it an easy process to follow, so there are no gray areas, so we can, you know, skip around and try to jump through. It's not saying they're trying to jump through anything, it's not trying to say we're trying to jump through anything or or avoid some things, it's just, let's make it black and white, let's make it easy for when that submitted plans get submitted to Pan Boz, they go right on the list, check it off and it moves down the line. So that's all we're trying to do.
To your point, you just said that this plan's been around for how many years? And you're saying things are just jumping out? This is a foundation piece, right? You already have an operating like list of things to do. This is a black and white checklist. So I don't know why you're like literally, you're saying something completely different, like, oh no, something different. They base their designs off of this ordinance. Like what what where's the fear coming in though? Like, I don't, like, you're literally discrediting yourself.
There's no fear involved with the project, we're not trying to keep anybody out, that's not our goal. It's just to help the process move along at a more efficient pace.
That's what this is for.
It is. But in my mind.
You mentioned, you're like, oh, if something else changes or if they adapt. That's that's like a non scenario. You're you're creating this scenario for yourself. And I feel like, you know, I get the positioning that you might be coming from, it's just not actual, right? You you work to do this, you you help create this with this body. And you're worried about something that won't happen probably. Why?
Well, let me just say this, that although it's two and a half years old, they just came to us and went may with a proposal or a plan or whatever. So we, this is the first time that we've had to actually look at this ordinance to deal with it with an existing company and an existing proposal. Before then, we had no reason to deal with the ordinance because it wasn't an issue, now it's an issue. And we met with the company on several occasions, we discussed these things, so they're aware of our concerns. And it's been brought to light, and I'm not sure why you're raising that question and saying discredit it.
It is a race issue, yes.
Well, I mean, as far as how the discourse is going, I mean, this is a natural progression of things. There's always. It's just like a new law. It gets put put through a test sometimes in the court. Now, this is a similar process to that.
It's a never ending process.
You know, ordinance was written. And now it's being put to test. So, I mean, along with that, I'm figuring out how this is gonna work day by day. And they can change. So once more around the table. If anybody here has any more comments?
Just jumping out at this right here, that's a lot of reason why we're here.
There's gotta be a. Can I suggest, you know, what I would suggest is that we confer with these experts that we're hiring.
Yeah.
And, you know, I I mean, maybe that part needs to be improved a little bit. You know, I I I think there's a concern about, but I don't know that it can't, that that can be solved without, you know, I I, you know, I'm sure you're you're an engineer, right? And we actually are on the.
I just look like one.
You just, okay, well, it sounded like, it sounded like an engineer. Okay. Okay, well, you know, we're, it it's an engineering question and and we, you know, prohibitive cost is an engineering question. And I think we're gonna need to get some consulting from an, you know, from an engineer on that point, probably, to try to make that better. I mean, I agree, it's a gray area a little bit, cause what's prohibited, you know, there's always some of that, but that that that's one that's come up and and it's, it it needs to be resolved. I mean, I I think we also have the issue of notice to neighboring landowners to be resolved, the issue of setbacks to be resolved. Those are the the three prime areas, right? And I don't know that we, you know, it's not even legal for you to decide today, this is the question, the issue today was, what are the questions that we need to resolve? And I, I do want to clarify, of course, that, you know, when you, when somebody comes in under an existing, you know, zoning plan and they start taking action, they, you know, they're under that one. And it's, as Lisa said, essentially, but they've been very flexible and easy to work with, so, you know, but, you know, we can't make drastic changes at this point in their plan.
Right.
Right? But.
That will work with you.
But that worked fine, they've been great about it to us, so. But but I think, you know, is that a fair characterization of the issues? I I, you know, this isn't the time to solve them, it was the time to ask them, I think.
Yes. Yes. Further business. Motion.